All right, good morning, everybody. It is 9:01. We'll go ahead and call a meeting of the county commissioners to order for Tuesday, November 25th, 2025. We'll begin this morning with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have Natalie lead us this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reminder to please silence your cell phones this morning so they do not disrupt our meeting. Don't forget to turn them back on. Call for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or by telephone by calling 605-882-6248 or 605-882-6297. Commissioners, are there any conflict of interest items this week?
No.
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 Tyler?
No.
Look for an action to approve the November 25th agenda.
So moved.
Motion carries. Second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Motion carries. Action to approve the November 18th minutes. Motion by Johnson, second by...
Second.
McElhany. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number six. This is action to approve plat resolution. We'll take the first one, which is 2025-19, which is Nancy and Barry addition. And just more of the...
Good morning, commissioners. Yes, did we get a motion? Or we wait, that's right. So the plat, as you mentioned, is the plat of Nancy and Barry addition located in the northwest quarter of section 30, township 117, range 51. That's the north flavor at Cransburg Township. For, just for reference, it is about two miles east of Watertown. And a little bit south of the north interchange, a mile and a half. The plat here is just a plat to create two lots. They wound up replating this. It is the site of a farmstead. One lot is six acres and the other one is 35. The only unique, probably the unique part about this is that we required both lots to be platted because one of the houses, though it's going to be on that lot one, would potentially be in the same quarter quarter as the house that's already there. They're just going to sign off saying that they understand and they're not going to build. They realize they don't get an extra building right out of this thing. Plated commission recommended approval.
So moved. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any discussion? My request?
This question, Mr. Chair. You said one house. Is there two houses there?
Yes, so right now, there are two. There's the traditional farmstead, the site that had been the farmstead, and then the five acre building right side that's already there. They replatted that, reconfigured it, so now the existing farm site will retain its ability to build on 35 or more acres. The small lot, which was permitted back in 2008, will remain its ability. They just reconfigured that lot. And then you've got what is now Lot 1, which will be 35 acres, potentially to have a, would have a house on it. And the whole point there was that rather than say, you can have this house, but only if you build it in this little portion, we just went, you know what? If it's on that lot, it's good. So they're using the building right for the northwest quarter, the northwest quarter with Lot 1.
Do you have more questions?
My room made a motion. McElhany seconded. Or Gable. Was it Gable?
Gable.
Gable seconded.
Yeah. I seconded.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to item number B, B6, 2025-20. This is the Davis addition.
Sure, this plat is a little more conventional from what we see. This is the plat of Davis addition, northwest quarter, section 33, township 116, range 55. That is Henry Township, southwest corner of the county, straight south of the east edge of Henry, all the way down a half mile north of the county line is where this is at. They're plating a 26.8 acre piece of property. It includes a farm site as well as a pothole that goes with it. So 26.8 acres are granted farmstead exemption to create at less than 35 acres. Plating commission recommended approval.
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhany, second by Schwerer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. 6C, this is 2025-21, Lot 1 and Lot 2 of the Gebhardt First Edition.
All right, this is a plat of Lot 1 and 2 of Gebhardt First Edition in the northeast quarter and the northwest quarter of section 24 in township 117 North, range 53 West, which is Lake Township by my recollection. This is a plat that should look a little bit familiar to you as a board because this was before you in the past. It just waited a while to be recorded, so we had to just come back and verify that it was still okay. The real change here is that the original one that was approved had a easement that would roll right down the middle at about where the access location is, or the split between the west edge of Lot 1 and Lot 2. That easement is not going to be necessary, and instead it goes all the way to the west edge of the property to go around, and that's for the sake of a future road if need be. And ultimately, it was just a change in city policy as far as how they wanted to see that on there. So the truth is, this, from my recollection, this makes a lot of sense as far as how it's done.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhany.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gable.
Yeah, I need to recuse myself from this because this is about a relative's property. I was involved in assisting with it. So I'm, let the record show, I'm recusing myself.
Thank you very much for that. Commissioner Gable will recuse himself. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Gable, you can't vote because you recused yourself?
Oh, sorry. Reflex action, sorry. Oh, yeah.
Goes opposed, say go. All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, let's move on to...
Thank you, Luke.
Do you have anything else, Luke? I don't think that's...
I'll turn the microphone on now, so that probably won't help.
All right, monthly reports. Our state's attorney is not here this morning. She had a family issue to deal with, so she was not present. So we'll move on to sheriff's report. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Sheriff. Heard you on the radio this morning.
You spoke yesterday morning.
You hooked up the net.
The days all run together.
The days all, especially when you start talking about weather, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, it is handy, and I appreciate it when you let me know what's going on out there. I don't mind that, but it's four tennis morning. I got an email that my wife's order was ready.
Perfect timing, right?
Perfect timing, yeah.
You thought it was weather related, but...
All right, you have a question?
All right, well, everybody should have a copy here. We'll get started on the commissary monthly balance sheet for the month of October 25. Bank balance end of October was $21,911.18. At the time this snapshot was taken, there was $796 in the lobby ATM and booking kiosk for a grand total of $22,707.18. To break that down a little bit further, of that $22,707.18, resident balances were $1,787.14. Commissary items, tax not disbursed, here was $3,814.38. And funds balance of $17,105.66, which brings us back to our $22,707.18. If you jump down to the bottom there, you'll see in our commissary phone and kiosk commission who made a grand total of $3,185.96, which was remitted back into the general file. Look on the next page there, you'll see the bank balance for the sheriff's office there. End of October, bank balance was $13,216.79. Fingerprint fees collected were $60, copy fees $28, sheriff's fees collected $11,866.2 executions collected $635.67, and warrant fees collected were $250. We did have to do a stop payment check for one that got lost in the mail that we sent off to Spearfish down there, and so that was a $12.40 bank reimbursement that we had to get, so. Jump to the next page there. We'll talk about some of the sheriff's office activity for the month of October. Responded to 563 calls for service. There's 28 accident reports that were completed. We responded to a lot more accidents than that, but that was actual state defining accident reports that we actually completed. You see that number jumped up a lot. We're doing a lot more deer accidents, even in November here. We've jumped up a lot more, anywhere from three to five deer accidents a day that our office seems to be handling. So watch out for deer. They are outrunning. Warrants served, we served 53 warrants. There was 243 civil papers that we served. And transport miles, we put on 3,220 transport miles. That was a total of 14 trips and 20 people that were transported the month of October. Scroll on down to the middle here, we'll talk about some jail activity. Our average daily population for the month of October was 49. Our high ADP was 55, the low ADP was 40, and that was on the first. And the high was on the 24th, so the beginning of the month was a little bit lower than the end of the month. On the 24/7 program on the SCRAM bracelet, we had 15 participants, 12 people on the remote breath, 55 on the twice daily PBTs, and 46 people on the twice weekly UAs, zero people on the sweat patch for a grand total of... That number, 128 participants on the 24/7 program. If you scroll on down to the bottom a little bit more, you'll see on the out of county contracts, we collected $14,090.35 work release fees. We collected $3,910.24/7 fees. We collected $13,075.75. And SCRAM fees, looks like there's zero. Not sure why that blanked out right now, but... Any questions on that? Couple more things we kind of want to share. Over the last October there, we had a couple deputies that attended DRE continuing education in Sioux Falls, DRE's Drug Recognition Education, or Experts, Drug Recognition Expert, continuing education that they took. So we have two deputies that are DREs. We have one deputy that took an MRAP armored course training and maintenance class to learn how to help maintain and operate our armored vehicle that we have for the county. We're currently working on trying to get our Taser 10s that we approved a couple months ago, working on getting the training and getting the staff all trained up on those so we can get them out in the field. And one last thing, I signed a 60-day agreement to test out FLOC cameras. FLOC cameras are license plate readers that we're going to have in the vehicles. It works with our cameras that we've already got, our GTAC cameras, to do some testing on that for 60 days at no expense to the county. If it works out, that is something that we budgeted for next year. I'll go into more in depth if we decide to end up going that direction. So there's a couple cameras that we're going to test out in the county, on some county roads with that as well.
So it basically reads the license plate and...
Yep, tells if it's a stolen vehicle or if there's a hit on that vehicle, and it'll alert the deputies, so. I'll share more information, bring a little presentation on that if we decide to continue going that direction.
Brad, how efficient are the deputies and yourself and whoever in identifying, you know, when you pull somebody over, whether they are impaired by drugs or alcohol? And, I mean, I, from day one, I've always been concerned about the deputies and their, the law enforcement. You know, can you really tell? I mean, is it...
That kind of, yeah, that's a very good question. That actually kind of goes back to, just a little bit ago, we talked about, sent a couple deputies to the DRE continuing education to be able to help pick up on those slight cues. Drugs are a little bit different than alcohol and some of the cues and some of the things you pick up on, and all that is training that we do with our staff to try to make sure that they can notice those things and see them. Working in the detention center, like I say, I usually have my deputies spend some time in the detention center, and unfortunately, people come and go from there quite often that are under the influence of drugs, and they get an opportunity to see them and work with them, and so those are like a kind of a training ground so we can help determine whether, when we're out in the field, if they're under the influence of something or so.
If you, if you arrest somebody and you take a blood test, how long does it take to get a result?
That has been, over the last couple years, kind of been up and down. It was a lot longer. They were having issues at the state. They're trying to make sure that we're getting those back on a timely basis. The state has been working with the Sheriff's Association and the chiefs to try to knock that timeframe down a little bit. I know that was an issue with the state's attorneys too on some of the prosecution of getting those tests back in a timely manner so they can prosecute.
It's not an overnight deal, is it?
It's not an overnight thing, so.
Yeah.
They are working on those times, and they, the state has been able to knock that time down considerably, so it's been working a lot better over the last, almost two years.
Yeah, I know.
Do you want to answer that, that's Mark?
It's who?
Mark.
Yeah, I'm Mark.
Hit.
Okay, which should I hit?
The green.
The green one.
Just hit the green.
Ready?
Yep. Hello? Mark?
Yes, this is Mark.
Okay, Mark, we're not quite ready for you yet, so just hold the line a few weeks, please.
Okay, so...
All right, Brad.
Thanks.
So, yeah, that's all I had for the monthly update here, unless you guys had some questions, so.
Any questions, commissioners? Now, we'll move on to item number eight. This is action to advertise and hire a full-time deputy to fill a vacancy in the sheriff's office.
Had a deputy that accepted a position in Brookings, the city of Brookings. His wife has been working down there for the last couple of years, and it's just the move that needs to make for his family, so he will be moving down there in the next few weeks, so looking to fill his position.
Motion by Johnson.
Motion.
Second by McElhany. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Number nine, this is action to authorize the chair to sign Bridge 15-154-080, design expectations for speed and for the headwater documents. That's a lot of stuff I don't understand, but Randy does, and he's here, so. Good morning.
Well, that's why we also brought our expert engineer, Mark Yonker from Banner, to help explain this and answer some questions.
Sounds good. Can you do me a favor, Randy?
Yes.
Take that microphone and turn it on and then put it right over the speaker there. Can you get him on record here?
Good morning, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
We can hear you, Mark.
Okay. So items nine, 10, and 11 on your agenda this morning are documents related to three bridge hydraulic studies we completed this year. And these documents are required by the South Dakota DOT as part of our work. And by signing these documents, the county is simply acknowledging the design exception for each one. So starting with item number nine, there's two design exceptions related to this bridge. The first one is for design speed. We're actually improving the design speed and site distance a little bit compared to the existing bridge, but we can't quite meet the 55 mile an hour design speed without significantly increasing the cost of the project. So that's what the first document is for, for that bridge. And the second one is for design headwater elevation. We're, the new bridge actually performs a little bit better than the existing bridge, but we can't quite meet the 10-year design headwater criteria. The existing, I mean, it's a pretty, it's on a township road, and the existing bridge is performing just fine, so it's, it's just some paperwork acknowledging those design exceptions. So we need to make a motion. Is it separate, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, we will take him separate. So this is 15-154-080. Are these two both included in that design exception? Two separate forms.
Yeah, there's two separate design exceptions. Your, your action is, there is designed both of them for nine, so...
Commissioner Gable, we'll take both of these in one motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll take...
I'll second.
Okay, we'll take McElhany's motion, Gable second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10 is to authorize the chair to sign Bridge 15-170-144, design exception for headwater documents.
Yeah, this, this bridge is on the Sioux County Road over the Big Sioux River. And this is a design exception for the 25-year headwater elevation. And again, we sized the bridge to closely match the performance of existing bridge. Existing bridge is working well. And we can't, we can't quite meet the 25-year design criteria without significantly increasing project costs and recreating that roadway around that bridge. So that's what this document is related to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Banner, made a second. By Schwerer. Any further discussion on that? Once again, that's located on the Sioux County Road over the Big Sioux River, so all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10 is to, well, let's see, that was number 10. Let's move on to number 11, action to authorize the chair to sign Bridge 15-215-230, design exception for overtopping the frequency documents. Go ahead.
This, this bridge is located on 177th Street Township Road over the Big Sioux River. We size, we have a slight improvement in the overtopping frequency of this road. We're going from about a five-year overtopping frequency to a six-year overtopping frequency with the new bridge. We can't meet the 10-year overtopping frequency design criteria without significantly increasing the bridge size at this location. So we're making things a little better, but we can't, can't meet that 10-year criteria at this location. It's what this document is related to.
Commissioners, you do not have that in your packet if you're looking for it, but um...
I'll make copies.
Friend, don't make copies for you if you want copies. Motion to approve. Motion by McElhany.
Second.
By Gable. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I would have laid off that.
Oh, yeah, he's on there, isn't he?
Yeah.
That's right, okay.
But when Mark came, it was uphill, it was just going.
Okay. We could probably leave that microphone over, that'd be good. Action to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs Secretary for CSO Salary Reimbursement for January 1st, 2026 to December 31st, 2026. Now, monitor.
Right. So this is just an agreement to continue the state reimbursing a portion of the BSO's salary that has been, something that has taken place throughout the years, but it's just an agreement to continue that support.
How much is that per state?
So for populations from 20,000 to 50,000, it is 4,812.50, so.
Hold the approval. Motion by Johnson, second by McElhany. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13 is action to approve abatement applications. Do we have any?
Actually, yes, they're not. It's a little different. It's an abatement or refund of taxes. So we actually have a couple refund of taxes. And the first one is for record number 19211. The amount of the refund will be $257.18. And the reason is that this parcel had two tax bills generated in error. So there was a plat made and then another, a tax split was done, so that's the reason for that one. And the second one is for record number 20057. The amount of the refund is $22.02. And this is basically the same reason, there was two separate tax bills were created in error.
Move to approve. Take them both in one motion. Motion by McElhany, second by Gable. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 14 is action to approve claims for payment. Sure we have some of those today?
Yeah, we just have a couple of those, actually. And I like them in two different motions, because one is, it lets you to the jail bid, or jail bill. The first one is to the Sheridan Hotel. It is in the amount of $291.99.
Move to approve. Motion by McElhany, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Schwerer. Discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I guess we have three. Anyway, and then for the jail bill for Beckenhour Construction in the amount of $473,358.05. And then Architect, Inc., in the amount of $6,881, for a total of $408,239.05.
Take them both in one motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Motion by Schwerer.
Second.
Second by McElhany. Discussion?
Quick questions, Chair, and maybe we can answer. Beckenhour Construction, that, that fee, is that...
Yeah, well, it's just, it's just mapped out over the course of the period of construction, so it's just part of the, part of the, yeah. Is that, is that your question?
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering, there's no, like, there hasn't been any submitted exceptions or amendments or anything to the normal?
No, I mean, there have been some, there have been some change orders. I can go, I was going to go over those, the commissioners' comments, but, but as far as what the, what the construction manager fee is, I don't think that that has been a component of any of those, the change orders.
No, these are just normal construction.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
We have salary claims also in the amount of $815,847.05.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McElhany, second by Johnson. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Nothing to pay for that.
Personnel changes, number 16.
We have one, that's in a packet for Brandon Bieber. He is a part-time correctional officer in the jail. His effective date will be November 24th, 2025. Step one, 25:80 an hour. He's a new hire.
Move to approve. Motion by McElhany, second.
Second.
By Schwerer. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Travel requests, number 17.
Nothing, no travel requests.
Number 18, public notices that a possible form of commissioners could be in attendance at commissioners. Commissioners, do you have anything this week? Nope?
Depends on where you're Thanksgiving.
Well, I guess that's true. I'll be at my house. I don't know if any of you are coming over.
Does it wish you great? Is that a bologna?
Bologna sandwiches.
Is it a bologna?
Come on over.
Are you inviting us for a bologna?
I am, so you're welcome to come over, but. It's no more than two. All right, nothing for that. Let's move on to old business, number nineteen, anything for old business? Nothing. Twenty is new business. Commissioners, anything for new business this week? Nothing. Uh, Commissioner Gable, uh, okay, twenty-one is open public comments. Anything for public comments? Nothing. Anything for Commissioner comments? Commissioner Gable, did you have something on the jail?
Yeah, I was just going to update you on some of the, the change orders. I don't know if you can see the screen, I'm, I'm not sure how the screen, I know we have some Zoom issues today, so you may not be able to see. Um, there's been a, a number of, of small orders, uh, small changes, so, you know, they're all under the hundred thousand, um, dollar mark. Um, the, uh, probably the biggest of the small changes has been the, uh, the hydrant network that the city of Watertown required us to put around the jail, and that's been, that, the amount for that, just to give people an idea, is, is ten thousand dollars more, ten thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars forty-six cents. That's been the highest price change order. Um, we had, we had one credit for eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and five cents under, um, among them. Uh, a big one that's, that's going to come is, it's not huge, huge, but we're, I, I don't know the exact price yet, but on Area A, which is, that's the main housing area on the north part of the jail, uh, if, if you get the footprint of the, of the building. Um, based on the soil conditions and going through the budget, they, they, uh, they, they want to put the footings a little deeper to ensure against, you know, proceeds or anything like that, just the durability of the building, so. Um, so we're working up that one right now, and so that's probably going to be the most significant one thus far. Um, but it's not, it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be anywhere close to the hundred thousand dollar limit, so. But keep it posted, um, the work continues, basically, it's mostly, uh, foundation work, uh, you know, getting the plumbing and the electrical and all that in place, um. So we have, uh, the foundation, the, you know, the spread footings and the foundation, the bottom part of the wall basically going in, um, throughout the, uh, the structure. Uh, that is probably, that part is probably mostly done in Area B, which is that area where the booking, kind of the process of the jail takes place, and then that is beginning in Area A. Again, that's the housing area. So that's, that's it in a nutshell right now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gable. I think I can speak on behalf of the rest of the body here that we appreciate all your work on this, continuing work. We know it is a lot of work, and you're staying on top of it and updating us, and we appreciate that, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else, commissioners? Just like to say that it is officially snowing right now outside. I don't like that.
Yeah.
We may have to adjourn our meeting early, so. All right. Action to enter into an executive session pursuant to STCO one dash twenty-five dash two. We do have, I mean, you need to go into executive session for the purposes of security, I believe.
Personnel.
Personnel, security, okay. All right, and we do not anticipate action follow, eighteen. That would take a motion to enter into.
So.
Executive session by Johnson, second by Matt Leehany. Any further discussion? Don, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned, thanks, everyone.